So I'm trying to see who is coming up first. Mr. Denny, are you coming up? I'd like to welcome Mr. Denny, the House Principal for our sixth grade center.
Thank you. So we are here tonight to recognize the sixth grade students for relationship building. As you know, that is one of the important keys to the Portrait of a Graduate. I have so many students that I could recognize for this, but I did ask for help from my teachers to nominate students who, over the course of the first two months, have demonstrated relationship-building skills. So a little bit about those students. So the first student I would like to recognize is Cole Carpino. And his teacher let me know that he has a willingness to work with all students. He wants to support others in his groups, and he has a willingness to take the lead and read aloud for the benefit of the class. So that is Cole Carpino. Stella Lynn Bure. I actually had three teachers nominate you, and two of those teachers don't even have Stella Lynn in class, and they were able to see how she builds relationships. So the three statements I have are that she is always willing to help others and brings a wonderfully positive energy to the classroom. The second teacher has observed her in the hallway being so friendly and kind to others, including that teacher. The third teacher said she is very personable and consistently demonstrates kindness and respect, often greeting teachers politely in the hall. She is always eager to help her classmates, and her bubbly, positive personality naturally fosters strong relationships and a welcoming classroom environment. Please give a round of applause for Stella. Alcatem Idris. My friend has just joined us, a couple weeks into the school year. So the teacher informed us that he joined the class later in the term due to a schedule change and quickly made a positive impression. He was enthusiastic about sharing his background and the many places he has lived. His outgoing nature and genuine interest in others enable him to build strong relationships and form friendships with ease. Please give a round of applause for Alcatem. Mia Rodriguez is a role model relationship builder. She is kind and compassionate towards others and never fails to intentionally reach out to include all of her peers in group activities. She is collaborative, respectful, and supportive of others. Please give a round of applause for Mia. Shyla Soto. Showing interest in another student's creative writing project and offering to help edit it, she appreciates other students' creative writing in an optional book-writing club. She looks out for and supports others and is open to working with a wide range of students. Please give Shyla a round of applause. And last, but certainly not least, Carly Yerk. She is friendly and thoughtful. During her daily dedication activities, she always listens attentively and asks genuine, meaningful questions to learn more about her classmates and the people who inspire them. Her kindness and curiosity help build strong, positive relationships and make our classroom a supportive and engaging place to share. Please give her a round of applause. Now if you guys can please come up, I have a certificate for you, and we will take a picture.
All right, good morning. It is not morning, it is the evening. Good evening. My goodness. Good evening. Thank you for having us this evening. It is an honor to be up here and celebrate our students. Such an important award that we're presenting at a critical time of the year. Receiving something like this so early in the school year is incredibly meaningful and supports the transition of all students into the buildings. Looking at the sixth graders up here, seeing who received this award, looking forward to having them at Strayer next year is something we're looking forward to. But tonight, I'm proud to recognize a group of students from Strayer that have truly exemplified what it means to be a relationship builder. These students have gone out of their way to show kindness, compassion, and support for their peers through the transition of a new principal in the building and, for some, transitioning into this new building for the first time. We've had several new students coming from outside of the district, and these students have supported them, have gone above and beyond to support new students transitioning into our community. But to begin, I want to recognize, start by recognizing three boys. I believe two are here tonight. Diego Rodriguez, Kevin Romero Avalos, and Daniel Martinez Acevedo. If you guys want to come up, sorry, I'm going to make you come up and stand in front of the crowd. When a new student, how are you doing? Thanks for coming. When a new student was preparing to join Strayer, Mrs. Smith, an EL teacher at the building, reached out to these boys to help make their transition smoother. They not only gave this student a tour of the school before his first day, but also served as guides and friends during his first week. From the very beginning, they showed kindness, inclusivity, and friendship, and you could see the relief on the new student's face when he realized he had peers he could easily communicate with and who genuinely wanted him to feel part of our school community. Thank you. All right, next, Quinn Ryder. Would you like to come on up? Quinn, who has been very caring towards others. At the start of the year, she played an instrumental role in helping new students navigate Strayer and supported many of our seventh grade students during their transition into the middle school. Her kindness and willingness to step up made a big difference for her classmates, and she continues to show what it means to be a panther who builds strong, supportive relationships. Addison Renner. Addison consistently demonstrates care and kindness towards others. Every day, Addison chooses to sit with and support a classmate with special needs at lunch and throughout the day. Her thoughtfulness and compassion makes a real difference in that student's day and serves as a powerful example of what it means to live out the portrait of a panther as a relationship builder.
All right, and I'm lucky enough to recognize three of our eighth graders, two of whom are here tonight. First, I'd like to recognize Apey Manasova, who is a wonderful example of a relationship builder. Apey constantly gets along well with others and is known for her cheerful and kind demeanor. She naturally forms strong connections with her peers, and many students turn to her for advice and support. Beyond that, she is actively involved in our school community, always looking for ways to contribute in a meaningful way. Apey truly embodies the qualities of kindness, connection, and leadership that we hope to see in all of our Panthers. Next, I'd like to recognize Liliana Montano, who is, there she is, who is always willing to help others. At outdoor school last year, she showed incredible kindness to a classmate who was afraid of the water. She offered support, took her in a canoe, and helped her overcome her fear. This simple but powerful act demonstrated true care and compassion, and it made a lasting difference for her peer. Liliana is a wonderful example of the kind of Panther we are proud to celebrate. And finally, Emma, where are you? Right up front. Emma Lord is always kind and pleasant to others. She has been recognized by several of our English Language Learner students as a positive and supportive classmate. Emma's friendliness and encouragement help create an inclusive environment where all students feel valued and supported. Each of these students, Diego, Kevin, Daniel, Apey, Quinn, Addison, Liliana, and Emma, has shown us what it means to be a relationship builder. Their actions reflect the very best of our Portrait of a Panther, and we are proud to honor them tonight.
Good evening. I'm Mike Belinski. I am the ninth grade House Principal at the high school. I'm going to be sharing some news that's pretty much was given this morning, correct? We officially had our elections for the Class of 2029 Officers. They opened on Monday, they closed yesterday after school. I had the luxury of going in and closing that poll and seeing right away who our top vote-getters were. To give you some background, we decided to go with the title of Class Officers for the freshman year. So there were 27 freshmen on the ballot. The top four would be titled Class Officers for the Class of 2029. So this morning, I made the announcement to the school. I know three of them are here currently, so if we could have the three of you come up to the front. Maeve Bryan. I know Sloan Bubser's not here, but her mother, Dr. Bubser, is here. Apparently Sloan is doing some acting tonight. Jesse Carlton Sanaya and Alexa Reich. So these three individuals, I know we have four total Class Officers, they've been chosen by their peers to represent the freshman class this year in a variety of things that we will do throughout the year: fundraising, event planning. I am very excited to get to know them a lot more and to be with them as they enter a very unique and awesome leadership role as freshmen. So congratulations.
Hello, I'm Jason Magditch. I am the Class of 2028 House Principal, and I am really looking forward to this group of young individuals that I'm going to introduce shortly. So this is our Class of 2028 Officers. First person I'm going to introduce is our President, Joangelise Baez. So she wants to come forward. Joangelise is our President. She's involved with the Exercise Science Program at the Tech School. Joangelise was our Vice President last year as a freshman class, and this year she's been promoted to our President. So we're really looking forward to some great things from Joangelise and this whole team. But I will call the next three up, because there's actually three people here today, two unfortunately could not be here. And one thing about Joangelise that I do want to mention, she's actually working right now at the Dairy Queen, so as soon as she gets done, she's going to go back to work. So she's coming for that. Next is Amelia Kovalinsky. She is our Vice President. Again, just, we're so blessed right now, and probably going to last this long, the whole four years, but she is currently our number-one student in the Class of 2028. So round of applause for that. Again, you're going to hear, I can say this, and it echoes between the three that are here and two that aren't here, our five officers. We have a President, a Vice President, a Treasurer, a Secretary, and we actually have a social media person involved in our Class Officers. So the whole list here that I'm going to tell you about, they do excellent. Not only awesome in our tech schools, our AP courses number one, number five in the class, et cetera, so it goes on and on. We're just really blessed to have such a good group of young individuals helping lead our building and our school. Next individual is our Treasurer, and that's Zinnia Zorkin. Zinnia, again, is part of our cheerleading group, and last year she was our Outstanding Student of the Month. So she got recognized last year by the teachers for just doing some excellent work. So I know this week, I'm sorry, this month is about relationship building. These young individuals do an awesome job of building relationships with their peers, with their teachers, et cetera. So we're really looking forward to a great year. And I know there's some new things on the horizon as far as fundraising and possibly moving our senior trip to maybe a colder time in January in Class of 2028. So we're going to talk about some of the things that we're doing, shaking some things up. The other two individuals that aren't here are Secretary Carly Formica. She is unable to come here this evening. She's our Secretary. And our social media is Liesel Wagner, and those are our five officers. So I'm going to give them their certificates and take a quick photo.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kelly Lanuti. I am the House Principal for the Class of 2027, our junior class. And as you'll hear in the information that I'm about to share on these students, in addition to their roles as Class Officers, they hold many other roles and titles and participate in a wide variety of activities at the school and outside of the school that showcases their ability to not only build relationships but to exemplify all of the competencies of our Portraits of a Graduate. I'm going to read out their names in order, and if they're here, come on up. I do know we're missing, I think, two of the four. Ashley Arnold is the President of the Class of 2027. She is actively involved not only as a Class Officer but in the National Honor Society, the Key Club, Best Buddies, Homecoming, Fundraising, and Prom Committees. Eric Rotzel is the Vice President of the Class of 2027. He's actively involved also in the National Honor Society, in our STEM Club, in the Key Club as well, Varsity Singers, and our Theater Program. Nathan Steinberg is the Treasurer of the Class of 2027. He's involved in both soccer and track at the high school as well as the National Honor Society. And Elena Dederville is the Secretary, and we also have a social media coordinator. She holds both roles. And she's also involved in National Honor Society, SBLA, the Future Business Leaders of America, the National League of Innovative Students, Key Club, Executive Student Council, Students of Color, All-Star Cheerleading, Varsity High School Cheerleading, Track and Field, the SAT Prep Club, Homecoming, Fundraising, and Prom Committees. So round of applause. And I have your certificates, and we will also do a quick photo.
Good evening. And last but not least, my name is Helen Conroy. I am the Class of 2026 House Principal, and I have the honor of introducing our seniors, our Senior Class Officers. These students, throughout their four years, have embodied the characteristics of, excuse me, of a Portrait of a Graduate. They're excellent academically, they are involved in many activities throughout the high school and the community, and they are true leaders just by example and interactions with other students. So I will start with our President, Wilson Martinez. Wilson is the captain of the soccer team, a member of the football team, a member of the National Honor Society, and in the state and school musical ensemble. Our Vice President is Maeve Henry. Maeve is in the National Honor Society, she's the Treasurer. She's a member of the high school soccer team and the girls' basketball team. The Class of 2026 Secretary is Anna Green Day. Anna plays club and high school soccer and is a member of the National Honor Society. And the Class of 2026 Treasurer is Brecken LeBage. Brecken is a member of the National Honor Society and the Future Business Leaders of America, and a member of the high school soccer team. He is also ranked number one in the senior class. So we are incredibly proud of each of you, and we truly appreciate your leadership over these past four years at the high school, and we know you will do wonderful things and come back and tell us all about it.
Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, October 23rd Board Meeting. If we can stand and salute the flag, please. All right, thank you. Terry, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kern.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mr. Reimers.
Here.
Mr. Spear.
Here.
Mr. Shermer.
Here.
Mr. Hipoff.
Here.
Mr. Ayusu.
Here.
Mr. Lyons.
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell.
Present.
I like that, Mr. Lyons.
Very enthusiastic.
It was. Okay, before this meeting, there was an executive session that was held to discuss various HR topics, and this meeting is being recorded by the Board Secretary, livestreamed, and for all you people out there. Approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2025, please?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Spear?
I'll second it.
Mr. Shermer. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Onto the Superintendent Report. Dr. Friedman.
Good evening, Board President Hipoff.
Good evening, sir. How are we today?
And everyone in the audience? Thank you for being here. We are going to do things a little bit out of order because at least I know two of our members, not, well, no, just two. Have to get back to band practice, am I correct? Did I hear that correctly? Okay. So welcome. How you guys doing? Good. Good to see all of you again. So I'm going to turn, without further ado, I'm going to turn over the floor to Aiden, Kylie, and Misha.
Good evening, everyone. How are you guys?
Good evening.
It's good to hear. So the first thing I have to touch on is National Honor Society. We just recently had our induction of new members, and I'm very glad that I was able to attend and be inducted into NHS. We've already had many community service opportunities. Just recently, we had Autumn Alive, and I attended that, and it was really cool. And today, I actually stayed after school for tutoring. Nobody showed up, so I got to leave a little early, but next week, people will be there. Key Club has started and has already had two meetings. Again, many community service opportunities, and you can actually double dip between National Honor Society and Key Club, which is very helpful and important for NHS people. Hoco is this Saturday, Homecoming. The theme is Night at Gatsby's, and it's really cool to see our officers and Homecoming Committee create the posters and the decorations. Food is now being offered due to the higher ticket prices, so I'm looking forward to that. The Homecoming football game was rescheduled. As we all know, it had to be canceled at first, but we're playing Chester. They do have a 9-0 winning streak, so, you know, thankfully, they're coming out and we'll have a game. I'll get to cheer at the last game of the season. Hopefully, they'll go easy on us. Senior Night Football Game and Cheer Senior Night was last week. It was very bittersweet because the seniors, obviously, I've been with for three years now. It sucks seeing them go, but I'm excited to see where they all go in their life, so, yeah. Any questions?
No, thank you, Kylie.
Additionally, this past October, we had the first Coffee in a Q meeting at the Trolley Barn. It's really nice to see, like, the week after, instantly RISE started getting integrated more and more. more in my classes. And it's just awesome to see that. Additionally, we had PMB on Six ABC, which was awesome. We got to perform last Friday. On the news, we drove down to Philly and we played on the yard for the second time on the past two years. Additionally, we've had our competitive season started to ramp up. And we have our state championships coming up next week, which will be fun.
More on the music side of things, we just had our first band concert yesterday night in the Q-Pak. And that went pretty smoothly. And I can't, can't wait for the upcoming performances. Earlier this week, we had an AWS shortage, which led to the PSATs being rescheduled to this upcoming Tuesday instead of this past Tuesday. So that will be going on during the school day. And to wrap things up, well, the end of marking period one is coming up shortly in about a week. So everyone is making sure that their grades are all good and making sure the assignments are turned in. And, yeah, we're on to marking period two soon.
Is this, is this where all the teachers cram in their tests for the last, last chance for grades? And all the students actually study because they look at their grades?
Yeah. Yeah, in a sense. I definitely have, I have some tests coming up. And it's definitely just like a lot. And it's like, go, go, go.
I have like two on Monday.
Yeah.
After the weekend is rough.
I have a question for Misha or and Aiden. Band-related question. Tomorrow, at the game with homecoming ceremonies, are you guys doing your show? Or when are you guys doing your show, if you are?
I believe we're performing pre-game and the Hoco ceremony is going to be at halftime.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, that's good to know.
I noticed the recording of the last game, for some reason, the audio of the band was glitched.
Oh. That's unfortunate.
So fix it, I guess. I don't know.
Misha, go in there and fix it.
We'll get on that.
Actually.
I was there, you sounded fine.
My, my wife, my wife did a, actually recorded you. And her recording came out great because it was right behind Council Rock South's band. So you could hear their band cheering really loud for you guys. And I thought that was really cool when that happened, too.
Oh, yeah. We love, we love hearing the other bands cheer on for us. And we love cheering on for them. So it's great.
I just have to tell you that I received an exorbitant amount of text messages from colleagues all over southeastern Pennsylvania and New Jersey, and actually Delaware as well, complimenting you on the performance on the morning show. So kudos to all of you. It's pretty amazing.
Thank you very much. It's very much appreciated.
I also, I also want to point out to, to the board members that weren't there. It was such a pleasant surprise. Aiden showed up on his own to the first Coffee in a Q. And I'm going to embarrass him a little bit. You know, he said, he said he was there because he wanted to learn more about career language and Ryosec so he could take it back to the personal finance class. Am I correct? Yeah. And really talk to his teacher about how to integrate more career language conversations in there. Because he knew that the, the content was pretty mundane to all his classmates. And so he wanted to be able to build those career connections. So he came on his own to learn on his own, which I thought was pretty amazing. So, great one. Great job. Okay. Does the board have any other questions? Comments?
Get back to practice.
Yeah. Get back to practice.
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of us will be there Friday. And some Saturday.
Okay. We're going to shift gears a little bit. I'm going to do a quick recognition and we're going to do a, a brief presentation. And then I'll give my update. So, PSBA, the Pennsylvania School Board Association, their honor roll of School Board Service Program proudly celebrates school board directors for their longstanding dedication and service to districts and communities. Through this recognition, we express our sincere appreciation for their commitment to public education and the students they serve. Now, in its forty-first year, the honor roll recognizes school directors at five-year service intervals. So, the Quaker Town, and I know this gentleman does not like public recognition, but I'm giving it to him anyhow. The Quaker Town Community School District extends its heartfelt appreciation to School Board Director John Kern. For a decade, a decade, of exceptional leadership and commitment to our students, staff, and community. Over the past 10 years, he has guided our district, and this couldn't be more true, with integrity, vision, and a steadfast dedication to excellence in education. Mr. Kern's contributions have helped shape the future of our schools and the success of countless students. Thank you, Mr. Kern, for your years of service, wisdom, and unwavering support of public education. Your impact will continue to be felt for many years to come. Want to take a picture?
No.
I knew it. So I gave you the option.
Oh, you're cute.
We'll take it right here. You want to see this?
He's wearing his dress plaid on today.
Well, it only seems like a, a hot minute that I've been here, but thank you. I appreciate all those AI-generated words. They're right here. They're written out. Okay. Mr. Cuzzo, where's the clicker? Oh, at the podium? Okay. I'm going to do this from my seat if that's okay. I'd also like to invite Dr. Alexa Carter up here as well. So last, last month, we mentioned that we're going to really make a strong effort to give brief reports at each board meeting and at the Education Committee meetings as well to inform both the board and the community of different happenings that are going on in the district. So this month, I wanted to take a timeout to kind of go over briefly some of the research that we have been collecting with all of the career language integration that we've been doing across the district. Just as a reminder, I know we've talked about this a lot. We have used the Ryosec framework to really have students from kindergarten through 12th grade start to identify, self-identify strengths and interests that they have. And one of the biggest questions that the board asks me, that the community asks, and even the staff asks as well, you know, like, where are we going with this? And so one of the big things that we felt was necessary with many things that we're doing is to collect data to see how we're doing along the way and to give some feedback to all of you to kind of gauge where we are in, in the process. Just as a reminder, you know, as I mentioned, we are taking a dialogic approach, so it's conversational in nature. There is no curriculum, Ryosec or career language curriculum. So the teachers have a lot of autonomy inside their classroom to be very creative, to figure out how to integrate Ryosec-framed and career-language-framed conversations with our current curriculum. So. Kind of touched on this, but we can just go over this briefly. What is Ryosec and why we use it? Ryosec, if you remember, the acronym stands for Realistic Investigative Artistic Social Enterprising and Conventional. And those are different themes within the framework. And just as a reminder, we ask all staff, students, parents, school board members, community members, if they're looking at this, we want them to understand the whole framework and then see where they fit inside that framework. One thing that I do want to mention and just remind everyone at the table is that if a student identifies themselves by a particular dominant letter or letters, they probably will change. They could change daily, they could change weekly, monthly, yearly. But we wouldn't expect a kindergartner to keep the same letters all the way through 12th grade. So that changes over time. It's based on John Holland's Theory of Vocational Choice from the late 50s. He was an American psychologist. And so Quaker Town has used a Ryosec framework as a language for reflection, not just a classification tool. It was often used as a tool. It was something that, it was a test or a survey that people took. And we've kind of flipped it upside down and really taken a dialogic approach to integrating it as a common language. So, why career conversations matter? There are three reasons that really kind of came forward in this research that really focused on why they mattered. When students start to identify their strengths and their interests, they start to have a bigger sense of belonging. And the research has shown, not only in Quaker Town, but in other places, that they've collected this information at school districts, both in the continental United States and outside this country. There's increased motivation, there's stronger academic persistence because students are starting to focus on things that truly interest them, especially in the higher grades, when they are able to select electives. And the mental health and well-being, as I mentioned, with a sense of belonging. So as I talked about, we did some formal research. Someone that works with both Ed Hidalgo and Steve Rieger, who have been working with us now for the past couple of years. Her name is Dr. Christina Santos. She is a, she has a PhD in education from the University of Cambridge. And here's some of her CV right there, just to give some of her background. She has been wonderful to work with. She has created the, the survey tools and created the interview questions and really compiled everything and analyzed everything. And there is a white paper that we will be putting on the website and sharing with all of you that, from year-one findings, from the work that they've done across the district. So the study overview, and I'm going to nerd out a little bit, I should actually let Dr. Alexa Carter, she is a true data person, she's giving it back to me here. This was a mixed-method research design, meaning that it was quantitative surveys and qualitative interviews. So we both, we surveyed students, but we also had individual and group interviews as well. As I mentioned, Dr. Santos led this research in conjunction with people in the district, Dr. Alexa Carter, Dr. Hoffman, really ran point, Dr. Zackin for a little bit as well. There were over 1,600 students that were surveyed or interviewed in grades four, six, eight, 10, and 12. And we collected baseline data in December of '24, almost a year ago at this point, through May of '25. And we focused on both, as I mentioned, career identity, the Ryosec congruence, the alignment of the interests and traits, if things were lining up for students and where they saw themselves in the framework, and the overall well-being, finding a place and students feeling a sense of belonging because of these conversations.
If I could just have one more piece to the study overview, I think it's important to note that the study is peer-reviewed. So experts in the field reviewed the study and evaluated the findings prior to it being published.
Yep. And we were notified this week, actually, that we are under strong consideration to be published in a career development journal out at the University of Southern Mississippi. And they, they, they saw our work and, which I can just tell you from the educational realm, once it's published in one journal, it often gets picked up by many others. So it's nice to get some accolades for the hard work that our staff and students are doing across this district. So just to review, the implementation, the implementation timeline of career language in the district going back to '23, '24. We had an initial pilot group of 14 teachers across three schools. The three schools were Quaker Town Elementary, the sixth-grade center, and the high school. And they piloted career language with coaching from our instructional coaches. In January of '24, we then rolled out a full district professional development where we had a student panel of high school students talking about their experiences so far. We had the elementary and the secondary separated because we wanted to kind of zero in on specific conversations for each of those levels. In '24, '25, I'll steal a term from Mr. Kern, we went slow to, go slow to go fast. And so we had a district-wide opt-in initiative for 350 teachers. And so we said to them during the '24, '25 school year, we want you to try this. There, there is, you know, it's okay to fail, fail forward, we're going to work with you, we're going to support you, but try this. And we had Ed Hidalgo and Steve Rieger in classrooms all across the district in all grade levels. And they were modeling, they were co-teaching, they were giving support, they were giving coaching to teachers. We were working with teachers to kind of figure out how to fit these in to conversations inside their classrooms. I will tell you that recently, we were over at Poff Elementary, and it was interesting, we were doing learning walks. And we were in K1 and 2 classrooms. And just briefly, I wanted to share with the board and the audience that they were talking about the fire department was visiting in the afternoon. So in the morning, they were talking about what a fireman does and the qualities and what it takes to be a fireman. And the, the neat thing is that the conversations have elevated in our classrooms. So maybe at one point, it used to be a teacher might have said, who wants to be a fireman? And you'd probably get a lot of hints. Now it was turn and talk to people in, you know, sitting near you. And what letters do you think firemen most align with? And do they align to the same letters that you identify with? And if they're the same, what are some qualities that you have? If they're different, what are some differences that you see? And what are some other professions that might have similar letters and qualities as well? So it, it, it takes the career conversation to another level at a very young age. And so then they can come back and say, based off of all of that, who's interested in pursuing a career like this? And fast forward in the afternoon, those are the types of questions that the firemen were getting from our students. And I think they were a little taken back and surprised and happy that we were asking those kind of questions. So it was neat to see. So as I said, in '24, '25, we had a lot of teachers trying things and opting in. We had about 70 teachers receive formal coaching, 38 teachers hosted in-class demonstrations from the consultants across the district, as I mentioned. So fast forward to the beginning of '25, '26, we gave people close to two years to kind of understand, watch, model, design things happening in their classrooms. And we said this year, it was an expectation in all classrooms, K through 12, that we wanted to hear career conversations. And it doesn't need to be every day. There is no set limit how many times you do it or don't do it. But we, the expectation is that they are melded into any grade level or content area that we have across the district. So quickly, what the study asked, the core research question here was how do classroom-embedded dialogue-based career conversations impact students' career development, identity, and well-being? Kind of what we talked about. How are students seeing themselves? Do they have a sense of belonging in our schools? And are they starting to self-identify pathways that they might want to take based off of these career conversations? The outcome, the outcomes that were measured were career reflections, which I just talked about, career shaping, exploration, networking, interest alignment with careers, career identity, and locus of control, and school-based well-being. So the key results here, so what did we find now that I kind of gave you a refresher background? Career development and well-being improved across grades four through 12 over five months with students showing increased Ryosec congruence, stronger career identity, and a shift from career contemplation to action. So instead of just saying, who wants to be X, they were actually connecting it to their themes, their letters, their to their themes, their letters, their strengths, and their interests. And they were having a greater sense of identity, not only within the classroom, but the school themselves. And there was a shift that basically, when we had career conversations, students wanted to have career conversations, they didn't shy away from it. The five hundred and eight students surveyed in both December and May, there were significant gains found in positive well-being and career networking skills, and they were sustained within student growth. So, basically, as I mentioned multiple times, there was a greater sense of belonging, and there continues to be a greater sense of belonging for students. Some of the anecdotal things that I had heard along the way is that when students really started to identify to letters within the framework, they said, you know, "This allowed me to have conversations with people in my classes and the school that I never thought I would talk to in my time in the school." And I think that's pretty powerful when you talk about culture. And then, the last one, and I don't need to read, but, you know, Riesek congruence scores rose three percent, and alignment between student career interests and their parents' occupations increased fourteen point three, indicating stronger family-career connections. Oftentimes, and it's not always, but oftentimes, students, children will look at their parents' career as a viable option to pursue. Many don't, but many do as well. And so, our research kind of started to solidify that. Just some other key results, quickly. Career identity scores increased by four point five percent, Riesek knowledge rose by nine percent, suggesting that students gained both confidence and understanding and articulating career interests. So, to summarize that, the more we have these conversations, the more comfortable they feel self-identifying, where they fit in this framework. And then, there's some others, and for time purposes, I won't read those, but you have, you have these slides. And then, here's some more results as well. Basically, to summarize this, conversations happen throughout the year, and the themes that I talked about, the sense of belonging, the sense of starting to understand their place in the world, not only in the school, but in the world as well, and exploring career pathways, even if it's with the littles through to bigs, you know, really started to come into focus, and students started to really embrace these conversations. So, as much as I love talking to the littles about career, some of the high school focus group conversations were so impactful, because those students were getting closer to leaving us and going off into the world and really choosing any path, whether it's a two- or four-year college, a trade, the workforce, a gap year, you know, the military, it could, it could run the gamut. So, some of the things that we heard, three quotes that we put in there, I thought were pretty powerful. I feel like just having the letters gives me clarification and reassurance, this is a good path for me. Students, when they started to really self-identify, they, their life beyond the walls of our schools started to, to get into focus. And, and that's truly what we want for all of our students, that they feel confident when they leave here, and potentially leave Quakertown, that they feel confident that they're starting to make the right decisions. And then, I thought the middle one is, is really powerful. I feel like Riesek is so helpful. First time I was introduced to Riesek, I wasn't sure I cared about this very much. But as I went through more pathways and learned more, I thought, wow, this is really helping me think about what I want to do with my life as I get older. So, I can tell you, as a parent, you probably would want your children saying something like that. And here's a couple more quotes from the students, and I won't read those, but I thought they were pretty powerful quotes. So, some of the recommendations, and it's always the fifth chapter in a dissertation or research, but some of the recommendations from the research. To make career conversations regular and consistent across all grade levels, which we are doing, provide ongoing professional development for teachers, which we're doing during professional development days, and we're doing embedded professional development with our K to twelve instructional coaches. We are using, in the classroom, Riesek as a reflection tool for students. Students, when they work collaboratively, and that dovetails right into some of our portrait skills, you know, being effective communicators and collaborators. They're using it to reflect where they are, not only in the school, but in the district and beyond. Actively involve families in career conversations. We are continuing to find pathways to have those conversations with families, with parents, with community as a whole. We want to teach students the value of purposeful networking, and we just had an amazing visit today from a district in New Jersey that heard about all the work that we're doing, came up to talk about our career language and our pathways program at the high school, which I thought was, you know, it's always, it's always satisfying when we hear our people talk about the work that we're doing, because I think it makes you sharper. And, you know, we can show off the work that we're doing. And so, this district from New Jersey came over, because they were recommended to check out Quakertown, and so, we spent the morning with them, talking about these very things. And so, the last thing is investing in teacher leaders and sustained implementation. Long after the, the work of Ed Hidalgo and Steve Rieger, because as we've talked about many times, you know, consultants aren't here in perpetuity, you know, we need to build that foundation of having that work continue. And, and we feel that we're continuing to build a strong foundation. And it's been the work of Dr. Alexa Carter, and Dr. Hoffman, Kelly Kramer, the coaches, the principals, the teachers, that we've really moved this forward. So, to wrap it up, why this matters, you know, Ed and Steve and Dr. Santos believe Quakertown is showing it's not about programs, but people, you know, we're building relationships and culture, teacher, students, and families, using career language to foster direction and hope. And so, the, the thing that's most attractive to us is that it's truly a scalable model, and it's making career readiness a daily practice and not an event in our schools. And I think that is gonna help better prepare our students moving forward. Dr. Alexa Carter, did I miss anything, or you want to add anything?
You got it.
Any questions from the board?
Hey, it's a question for our student rep, Aiden, since you're still here. How is Ries, I mean, I went to the parent-teacher conferences, I see Riesek all over the classrooms, and how do you feel it's being implemented, because you've been seeing it for the last two years?
I've most recently started seeing it, like, this past year, in this past October specifically. But one example of this is in my physics class, we just finished our rocket-launching lab, and we talked about what career integration would look like with Riesek through, and like, what letters a rocket physicist would be. And, you know, we used it in history as well, talking about these world leaders and what Riesek letters they aligned with, or these big figures and people who are very influential in our history, and what Riesek letters they aligned with, and just how we use that. It really helped understand what careers I could go into, and just, it helped my peers around me as well.
Are you going into rocket launching, Aiden?
Unfortunately not.
Thank you.
Do you want to share your letters with us, Aiden?
They would be A, S, and I.
So, Aiden, did, understanding your letters and understanding how this Riesek helped you to look at things differently too, and maybe, you know, seeing how you felt your letters are, and how they aligned with what you want to do in your career later, did it change anything? Did it solidify anything?
It really changes how I view, how other people view things. It's very easy to think that I have this opinion, and other people must have the same, just because, but knowing that they have different letters and that they think differently helps me visualize how people understand things differently, especially in a marching band setting, in where I hold a leadership role as percussion captain. It helps me understand how other people don't always think alike as me, and Riesek helps with that.
Really good, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I got a few updates. Okay. So, we had a busy month of September and October so far. And I want to share some of the things that not only I've been part of, but have been happening in the district, that I'm very proud to share this evening. For the third year in a row, Quakertown Community School District was recognized at the end of last month, beginning of October, as a Common Sense Education District. If you remember, the past couple of years, and we're waiting to get them, to display them in our schools again, but the green and white placards, they were rectangular. We had that recognition again. This means that Quakertown is being recognized by, for our efforts in teaching digital citizenship to young students, engaging the entire community in this important discussion, and supporting educators across the district, K through twelve, who are using technology for learning. So, using technology as a teaching and learning tool in a safe and meaningful way. This has been a focus, at least since I've been part of the district, and we've partnered with Common Sense Education, which is a national nonprofit, which is very highly acclaimed and recognized across the country. I had the honor in early October to be part of and speak at the National Honor Society. We welcome new members to the National Honor Society, it's always an amazing night to honor the hard work of our students. This past month, and we started at Strayer Middle School, and we're gonna be going to the high school, I started an offshoot of my Superintendent Parent Advisory Council, and I kicked off the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. We have already met with students at Strayer, as I mentioned. Strayer Middle School students are taking an active role in helping to shape their school experience through this newly-formed council. Seventh and eighth grade students recently met with me to share feedback on school climate, classroom experiences, and growth opportunities in the school. And I just have to tell you that, you know, the students, I think Dr. Crater told me, I think there were something like sixty students that applied to be part of the council, and I think he brought about fourteen or fifteen to the first meeting. And we had an amazing conversation. It started out where no one wanted to talk, and then we were starting to go overtime, and they needed to catch their bus. So, it was, it was pretty awesome to have those conversations with the students. As we mentioned earlier, oh, and by the way, the high school is coming up, I believe, next week on my calendar. We started the superintendent, or, I'm sorry, our Quakertown Panther Marching Band, as I mentioned, was on Six ABC on Friday morning for the School Spirit segment. And on the Facebook page, it has gotten over twenty-one thousand views, which I did not mention, so that is pretty amazing. So, go Panthers on that. Learning walks have started, that is something that Dr. Hoffman and I have done the past several years, and in short, we go into classrooms. It's non-evaluative, we want to see all the amazing things that are happening in our schools, in our classrooms, and it is our unwritten goal to get into every classroom at least one time during the school year. So, this week, we were at Richland Elementary. Mr. Malik Nelson, an English teacher at the high school, and his African-American literature class won a one thousand dollar grant from the Quakertown Community Education Foundation, to experience a live performance of Amiri Baraka's The Dutchman, an exceptional experiential learning opportunity that will immerse students in the revolutionary spirit of the Black Arts Movement. So, congratulations to Mr. Nelson and his class. We are building on a fantastic partnership with the Cook Center for Human Connection, which is in year two, I believe. They provide almost daily free virtual resources for students and families to get mental health resources they need to thrive. That is up on our website, and I recently had the honor this week, on Monday, to do a podcast with the president of the Cook Center for Human Connection, and I'm excited to share it once it's edited and produced. This week, we also, and I appreciate all the parents that came out, we had our first in a very long time, K through twelve math night on Tuesday evening. So, it was very well-attended, and we will be posting all the details from that event for parents to review by the end of the week. I know Missy is working hard to get those materials up there. We talked about the different levels of math at elementary, middle, and high school. We showed the progressions of what it looks like for a student to matriculate through our math programs, K through twelve. And we had a pretty robust, I would say, question-and-answer session throughout the event, where we answered a lot of questions in real time, and stayed after to answer a lot of questions. But I think it was pretty eye-opening for those that joined, and we will have another one later this year. So, I gave everyone there an informal assignment to spread the word and bring people to our next event. Take five this week will be taken over by Quakertown High School's senior, Maggie Wilson. Maggie Wilson is, has an aspiring journalist. She wants to be a journalism major in college, and she is interning with our own Director of Communications, Missy Hardney. And I often see both of them together, doing some amazing work, but this week, Missy is turning over the reins to Maggie to create and put out our Take Five with Dr. Friedman, so I'm excited to see how that looks. The last thing, our next community conversation, Coffee in a Q, will be Monday, November tenth, with students and teachers from Quakertown High School's Pathways Program. We'll be sending out information to all our families, but specifically, we'd love to see our middle school students and our freshman students there to learn about this amazing program, and how it'll help them mold their future. It will be at six PM at Freefall Skate Park, which is across from the sixth grade center, so that's November tenth. And I believe that's my report.
Thank you, sir, I really appreciate it. Okay, we're gonna move on to standing committee reports. Education Committee meeting, Mr. Reimers.
Thank you, Mr. Hipoff. So, Education Committee met on October sixth, where we reviewed the program of studies. We looked at some of the changes and some of the language around what we were going to be do, doing moving forward. We also reviewed three design thinking books that were presented. They are, they look excellent, and look forward to our students having them. We discussed three new courses that we reviewed and approved, AP Cybersecurity, I'm sorry, AP Business and Personal Finance, and a LEAP gifted seminar, which is, it's a class, but it's not a class. If you want information about it, please watch the Education Committee, best way I can say that. We also did hear a little bit more about some, and discuss a little bit more about a data transition from our current data warehouse to a new data warehouse called Power School Analytics and Insights, where we, we already have some of the abilities, this would just be a different way of doing it, and would align with some of the things we have. The administration, though, did answer and discuss some of our concerns, because we had, some of us had memories of a few years ago when we switched to a data warehouse, where our data collection tools, where we weren't able to look at the data over the extended amount of time, because the data was being collected differently. So, they did address that, and they did, we did discuss that, I think, at length in the committee meeting. We also heard a little bit more about, actually, a lot more about iXL, where we had the administration come in, and they answered a number of questions, mostly for me, because I had a lot. So, thank you for them for coming in and doing that. And the administration briefly discussed a little bit of the role that data-driven decision-making will be playing in the district in the coming months and years. We just felt like it was too big of a conversation to have after, I think we were, what, two hours in by that point? We didn't want to rush through it, so we decided to ask them to bring that back at the next committee meeting, and give it a little bit more of a deeper, a deeper look, the look it deserved. I will say that after the math plus, or the, I'm sorry, the Math Pathways meeting that we had on Tuesday, I think it was, I did ask the administration to bring that presentation... we had on Tuesday, I think it was, I did ask the administration to bring that presentation in and give us just a small overview of what was discussed at the meeting, so that way it gets to more people than who were able to either attend the meeting or watch the meeting. And maybe they can access it a little bit easier or in a different way through our committee meeting. That'll be hopefully next, next, next month. So, I will say that what I do is I write up my notes based on the agenda. And for whatever reason, the most important thing on here, in my opinion, was the Program of Studies. And in my notes, I forgot to write that we reviewed the Program of Studies. So, if you're looking at it out there, and that's not in there, just know that we did review it. We did listen to the administration talk about what they wanted to do. And we did hear it. I just was dumb, and I forgot to put it on my notes. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Finance Committee meeting. We went over the agreement with the Bucks County IU to issue the annual Homestead/Farmstead notices for twenty-five, twenty-six. We also spoke about the twenty-six, twenty-seven Act One Index Resolution. And I think the things that got the most discussion, sorry to say, is the impasse of the state and federal budgets. I don't have anything good to say about that, so I think my mom told me not to say anything at all sometimes. So, we're going to go with that. We have, also went over the audit timeline, and we have a budget calendar. So, that was Finance. Facilities Committee meeting, Facilities Committee meeting, Mr. Shermer.
We had our meeting on the ninth of October, and we discussed softball options. We had a meeting with Richland Township, referenced their Rasa fields, and they provided some input. And we'll take that back and quantify exactly what our options are there. I expect that next month, we'll have some more concrete numbers and a direction that we can recommend to the larger board. The foul ball net, Mr. Christine, you want to just come up and give us the last report on our foul ball?
Well, you don't want to give a spoiler report?
No.
Yes, the foul ball net is complete as of last Friday afternoon. Today, Skeptin was working on the swell behind and repairing the damage from Heritage Fence, and that should be finished tomorrow. So, tomorrow, at the end of the day, the project is a hundred percent complete.
Okay.
And we had a tournament this weekend, correct?
Yes.
I stopped by and watched one of the games.
Did we get any nasty letters or?
Not yet.
I saw the day catch two balls. So, it definitely, at least caught two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
And then the other thing, and this will impact next year. We want to start the engineering review and getting the rough costs down for, at Chiller, for the sixth grade center. It's going to be a large budget item. It's, the building is going to have a bit of load. We can't afford to have it go down when, when we make the moves for QE. So, again, the board's going to have to wrestle with it in the budget next year. And it's probably, my guess is, going to be nearly nine hundred thousand dollars, all said and done. So, we'll start those, when I get engineers out. We did a lot of, my input is, we did an awful lot of value engineering. I want to make sure that it's sized right and has the right parameters for that size building. And then, we'll come back and formalize the bid process if we get, get funding approved. Really, that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to add one thing, and you were, actually, I don't believe you were there. Todd, Todd was there at the QE Planning Committee meeting this week with, where all the administration and staff. And I just want to say, you know, for anybody that wants to know, work is still going there. We may not have all these formal updates, but at this point, the administration is working with the architect to make sure the classrooms are designed the way that they want them designed. I mean, it's all the little behind-the-scenes stuff to ensure the design. But me and Todd did sit in on that last meeting. It was very interesting to see how the administration is working with the architects. So, I'm glad to see that happening as well.
Sort of like a requirements gathering.
What's that?
Like requirements gathering from the users.
Yeah, exactly. And Mr. Christine was, you know, giving his input for like the HVAC systems and things like that, like all of those, all those little behind-the-scenes things that you think just snap your fingers and get done. There actually is a lot of little planning to go into that. So.
I mean, they've taken the things into consideration, even where the sun rises and where the sun sets. Security reviews and safety reviews, and you name it, it's being reviewed and talked about and retalked about multiple times.
So, hopefully, maybe at some point, we'll, we'll get, you know, once they iron out how they want to present it to the board, then they'll bring it to us to, to see where they finished with everything.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shermer. Thank you, Mr. Spear. Policy Committee report, Mr. O'Donnell.
Policy Committee met on Monday, October sixth. We had several policies up for discussion. We've been pressed for time lately trying to get through all of them. As a result, we only have four that are going for first reading. That is Policy Two Twenty-Six Searches, which has been in policy discussion for several months now with lots of back and forth and legal review. And now that is finally in a state where it is ready for first reading. Policy Three Twenty, Freedom of Speech by Employees, is also going for first reading. Policy Six Twenty-Six dot one, Travel Reimbursement Federal Programs, and Policy Eight Twenty-Seven, Conflict of Interest. We have several policies that are moving for second reading and approval tonight. Those are Policy One Oh Two, Academic Standards, Policy One Oh Five, Curriculum, Policy Two Oh Nine dot two, Diabetes Management, Policy Three Seventeen, Conduct and Disciplinary Procedures, and Policy Nine Eighteen, Title One Parent and Family Engagement. For more details on the actual policies, please go back and watch the Policy Committee. The discussions are very long, and I can't keep track of every comment that was made.
Good.
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Mr. Lyons, the Quakertown Community Education Foundation.
Thank you. The Education Foundation met on Wednesday, October eighth. And I've attached the annual report, the agenda from that meeting, and the minutes from the prior meeting, because we meet every other month. And we had a lot of spirited discussions about different things. Dr. Friedman mentioned the grant we gave for the African-American Studies Field Trip. We re-upped our leadership. Dr. Szysinski, Chris Betts, Judge Roth, and Laurie Olickson will hold their positions as President, Vice President, Secretary, and Treasurer. And we had a lot of discussions about moving forward, building the organization, making it larger in scope and a little bit more defined in its detail. We possibly are going to be adding a few new members. So, if anyone has suggestions, anyone on this board wants to suggest anybody, please send me an email, and I will forward it to the group. It was our homework that we had to come up with a couple of potential people to add to the foundation board. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Mr. Jackson, we're going to go to you for the Bucks County IU, the Legislative Report, and the QA PC.
All right. The IU met just this past Tuesday, two days ago. As always, I include everything that we accomplished in the public content portion of my report there. I always like to highlight at least one. So, there is a report in there, a facilities mini-report. And of interest, I believe, is the list of school buildings that the IU operates. And what I mean by operate is we operate in a number of different schools, districts, utilizing classes within several buildings that are cohabitated by the districts themselves. The list there is similar, although a lot of the buildings themselves on this list are actually, while owned by a district, they're occupied solely by the IU. Of note, it's, is in the PA code, I'm not sure if Mr. Garten can correct me if I'm misspeaking here, but the IU is forbidden to own property save for their central office location. So, every school facility they occupy, they're leasing the space. In other words, sometimes they're leasing entire schools from a district. Sometimes they're leasing private commercial buildings to operate schools within. Recently, they have taken advantage of a, I guess, a fact of real estate out there. There are agencies out there that will hold the note to property. And the IU, or any agent, anybody can buy the land through them with this agency holding the note and pay the mortgage through to them with a little bit of a fee. The IU took advantage of a state-run or governmental, I'm not sure what the correct term is, but to, to purchase a piece of land so that we can build our own facility where we cannot find a place to lease. So, we're actually taking that first step as far as real estate is concerned. So, just a little interesting note about the IU. So, moving on to the Legislative Report, there really is but one topic in the world when it comes to, well, state government these days. That would be the budget. Yeah. The budget impasse remains an impasse. There is significant speculation that nothing will happen until December, believe it or not. There is, if you look at the Legislative Report, there is a statement that the Senate is of the opinion that it is not worth continuing to negotiate. And they are asking for somebody to just, let's just pass the budget as it is, a flat budget, the same way it was, and let's start negotiating on next, next year's budget now. That's how, you know, entrenched the sides are, for lack of a better term. I, you know, feel free to call your legislatures. I'm not sure if it's going to do any good. The federal government is similar. However, this affects many more people in many more dire ways. That one, we've all seen it on the news. They're all, they're equally entrenched. But I think as things begin to affect people in the next few months, that one, I'm sure, will be wrapped up before the holidays. Just my gut feeling. I have no pre-ship notice, you know, knowledge of that, but that's just one man's opinion. So, again, those are the two big things legislatively speaking in the world at the moment. You can go through the report. There's not a lot other than that to talk about. The state-level legislatures aren't meeting, and apparently, the federal-level legislatures aren't meeting either. So, take what you want with that. Moving on to the Quakertown Area Planning Commission, just a quick summary for those who are not aware. Every municipality has its own planning commission that meets to talk about land development projects in their municipality. For whatever reason, the Quakertown Upper Bucks area comprised of all the municipalities that make up the school district has a separate and distinct planning commission. We review every land development application that comes across any of the six municipalities and give our own opinion about that land development thing. I'm not going to speak to the necessity of that or lack thereof, but I just find it interesting. And of course, the most interesting thing that came across our desk, we did meet a week ago Tuesday. Of course, the most interesting thing that came across our desk is the next car wash, which is proposed for North of Three, North on Three oh nine, the old Navin Art Refrain Gallery, above Zion Hill, below Cherry Road. Yeah, so, enjoy. It's coming. That's all I have for the Quakertown Area Planning Commission.
We are going to have the cleanest cars in the county in Quakertown.
More car washes. All right, Mr. Spear, Upper Bucks County Technical School, and the PSBA update.
Okay, I'll start with the UBCTS report. The JOC met on October sixteenth, and the Career and Technical Expo took place on October ninth. This was a great event, which featured our UBCTS programs and brought in many businesses from the area. I witnessed students walking around with their portfolios, speaking to business representatives, and inquiring about future jobs. Thanks to Senator Coleman, Representative Stats, and Labs for organizing this event, and I hope it's something we can continue to do every year. It was really productive. The JOC approved another international trip for the culinary and baking students to travel to Spain next school year. This comes after the success of the Italy trip they took this summer. Look for fundraisers to help the students pay their way for this trip. And actually, I had texted the instructor for that, because she's organizing a bunch of fundraisers, and she is going to share them with me. I'll be sure to share them with our, our PR department. I'll share them with Missy to make sure they get passed along, so all these fundraising opportunities can be also spread out among the sending districts. And also, speaking of culinary, the last month, last month, the JOC approved a motion to send twelve culinary students to Epcot in Orlando, Florida, to attend the Disney Culinary Improv. This trip will take place in late April of this school year, so look for more fundraisers to help the students pay for this one as well. The Rockery Ridge Restaurant and Bakery are now open. Check ubtech.org for dates and times. Thursday, November thirteenth, from five thirty to seven thirty PM, UBCTS will have its annual open house, where you can tour the programs, meet the instructors and staff, and also begin the registration for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. There will be staff on hand to assist parents and students who want to register for next year. The annual winter holiday breakfast will be held on Saturday, December sixth, at the tech school. This is always a great time to bring your little ones and get a chance to eat some breakfast prepared by our students. The October Student of the Month is Olivia Remick. Olivia is an agricultural and life sciences student. She is also a senior from Quakertown. Olivia is currently participating in the co-op education program, where she works at Houseman's Fruit Farm in Limeport. She's a second-generation student at UBCTS, as her father also attended. She's attending the farm, or she enjoys attending the farm show as an FFA member representing UBCTS. Congratulations, Olivia. Quakertown School District was also recognized for their continued support and leadership with Dr. Friedman at the JOC meeting, with a giant picture of Dr. Friedman on the projected board, too. UBCTS has been thriving with the support from the sending districts, and this is the second-recognized sending district at UBCTS. Tonight, UBCTS is hosting its OAC members for their semi-annual OAC meeting. The OAC meets twice per year and is comprised of local businesses that advise and support the tech school on everything from curriculum to equipment suggestions. This is a vital part of what keeps UBCTS up to date with what the industries want and need from future graduates. The next UBCTS JOC meeting will be held on November twentieth at the tech school. And I guess I'll move right on to PSBA. Again, as far as PSBA legislative and advocacy, it's all pretty much centered around the state budget not being passed. And they, their, PSBA is working hard with our lawmakers to try and get that done. PSBA also hosted its annual conference, and I know we have try and get that done. PSBA also hosted its annual conference, and I know we have one board member this year that attended, Mr. Iusu. And at that conference, Dr. Friedman was honored as the 2025 Innovative Leader Award for the PSBA School Leadership Conference. It's actually a big deal award. He got a big trophy. I tried to get him to bring it to the meeting tonight, but he forgot, so.
Do you want me to go get it?
No, you don't have to go get it. But next meeting, we want it right in front of you on the table there.
It's obnoxiously big.
So congratulations for that, and that is my reports.
Thank you, Mr. Spear. Congratulations again, Dr. Friedman.
Thank you. It was, most of all, great to represent the district. This is about all of us, it's not just about me. I was just a recipient, but thank you.
Oh, Missy was also there and got a nice picture of you, too, so.
Yeah, Missy was there.
And I just want to thank Board Member Iusu for coming up to the event.
Yeah, I was glad to see, and lots of smiles, and to see our rock star on stage, did a great speech, talking about RIOSEC and how it's impacted our district in positive ways, and great recognition for our district statewide. So we did standing ovation for our good Dr. Friedman here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to guess I know the answer to this question. Terry, was there anybody that signed up for public comment? Of the huge audience out there, would anybody like to give public comment and not wait till the end? No. Okay, we're going to move on. President's comments. So I think the only thing I have is November 4th, come out and get out and vote. It's a, a lot of people did a lot of brave things for us to do that, so we'd all like to see out at the polls. All right, moving right along. Number seven, items for board action, charter school payment withholding resolution. This is a motion to approve resolution to withhold 25% of charter school payments as presented. Can I get that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Donald and Mr. Iusu, second. Discussion. Or would we like somebody to come up?
Can we clarify, this is to withhold 25%. Are we unique in this request? That's the first question I have.
Okay, I was waiting for the second question. We are not unique. We, an actual article was posted in Lehigh County, there are five districts who are currently doing it. In Bucks, there is one that officially did it, another district that is withholding payment, they didn't do a resolution. And in the other districts that I got back responses, there are a lot of conversations going on with superintendents and board members currently. Everyone's thinking it at least, so that's kind of the information I have right now.
The other question then would be, our dilemma is that we are not getting paid by the state or federal government, well, I don't know about the federal government, but certainly not the state at this time, monies that we require to effectively run our district. Why 25%? In other words, why did we limit ourselves to that versus a different number, higher and/or lower?
So at the finance meeting, we discussed corresponding the percentage to the percent of state subsidies we get in relation to our total revenues. So our state subsidies that we have not received yet are 24.9% of the budgeted revenue in total, so we average 25%.
Thank you.
Now, is the state also withholding our federal funds that are passed through the state?
So, we have not received access funding. We have not, we, it's still in October, I don't know that we're receiving title funds or not yet. So we'll see if we get a notification. We did get some good news that there is October funding for the National School Lunch Program, so that was good. So we'll get those where they had some more funds still in there. It's not approved to go for it, but they just still have money to do those. So we're not really receiving, I don't believe, any kind of federal or state.
Because the state distributes that, even though it's paid by the federal government to the state, then the state distributes it to the district. So if that's the case, then will our percentage change moving forward? That 24.9 or 24.5?
If you wanted me to include the federal funds, it would. I don't know that they're really tied to the charter schools, because I would argue that the state determines how we do our 363 form and how we pay the charter schools. So I can change that calculation and do that, it's not reflected in this resolution now.
Well, I guess we'll see, I mean, we don't know if they're coming or not, so we'll see how that goes.
So I have a question before you make any kind of, whether I decide to support this or not. I'm struggling to figure out what this dollar amount actually works out to. So I looked at the bills list, we spent $353,841.07 on charter school payments in the September's bill list, so 25% withholdings, I'd say a quarter of that amount, which would be $88,460.27. But I can't tell, based on the bills list, the dates of service or terms of payments from the bills list. So is that an accurate, is that an accurate way?
So I have a calculation. So we have not actually paid the 25-26 payments. We have 1.1 million that we owe for July, August, and September. We reconciled out 24-25, the payments that we made would have been for the prior year and reconciling. So currently, 25% of that would be 275,000, and then, on average, each month, it's about 387,000 if I use these numbers, and so it would be about 100,000 a month.
Okay. Yeah, it's tough looking at the bills list, because you don't know when those bills actually came through.
Yeah, well, that's what I was, I was struggling to try and piece it all together. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the federal government just awarded a, to the charter schools across the nation, a fairly substantial amount of additional funding that they hadn't been receiving previously, correct?
I'd have to check into that.
Yes, I believe that's correct. According to reporting, I don't know. I shouldn't. Thank you.
So Ms. Young, so if you did 380,000 on average times 12, that equates to about 4.56 million? That's how much we're spending or giving to charters?
So, yeah, we budgeted 5,200, I think, for 25-26, so obviously the number's going to range based on the number of days students are in there, but yeah, we're kind of between 4.6 and 5.8.
If I look at the historical, it was a lot lower, so we're seeing an increase in charter school payments?
So, forgive me, I'm going from memory from a chart in my mind, but I believe we kind of peaked right around the COVID time, and then we kind of stabilized, and then the costs went up. But I actually think that we'll probably be, if with last year's slight reform, that saved us some money, we also got a subsidy the one year that they didn't renew for the next year, and I think ours was about 325,000. So 24-25 might be a little different. I don't think the enrollment's going up, Dr. Hoffman left, but I believe the enrollment is down a little bit, I want to say around like 20 students. So I think we're heading in the right direction, especially with discussions about.
Online programs.
Yeah, so I think we're heading in the right direction and looking to do that. It's still a high cost.
Good. Thank you.
What do you think the impact is on the students if we yank this funding? Like, will students not be able to be educated?
I do not believe that that is the case. But I also don't have all of their individual financial things, but there's 500 school districts, they're not all doing it, so they are still getting some funding. I think that there should be cyber charter reform. I don't think that we should be paying what we're paying for cyber charter. So I think that there are still ways that they can survive. I don't think that their students are not going to be educated.
So do you believe that this is an adequate way to put pressure on the state to pass the budget then, too? Because the state's mandating that we pay the charters, the state's not paying us the money to pay the charters. So by us not paying this, the charters, once the budget's approved, will eventually get that money, correct?
So based on what the budget is and what charter reform could be in the budget, because that is also part of the discussions going on, they may not get the exact amount. There were, in, I think, the proposal that was done, there was some cyber charter reform that would have been beneficial to us as districts. So they will get whatever money the state has to deem on how we would pay them. Retroactively, we'd pay it all back. I can't guarantee it's going to be what we have here, because they might change the rules and say, well, now we can pay less for tuition or how they do those rules.
And how much do we have in fund balance in our savings account? Like 30, 40 million or something?
No.
How much?
No, not that much. I mean, we're okay, like I said, we're good. December's not feeling the best for me right now, but we're still okay. But I would recommend doing this, because I do think that currently, the school districts are feeling it, and charter reform is part of what's holding things up as well. So if the charter schools feel it a little bit, maybe then people could come together and negotiate a little bit more.
So if the charter schools need funds, they, there is a 500 million fund available, interest-free, from the state that they can get. We can't, because our finances are sound. So impact to the children is minimal, in my opinion, because if they really need the money, they can get it interest-free. And I think our IU did a revenue anticipation loan as well. So it'll bring some pressures, it gonna bring a lot of pressure? Probably not. But the charter schools make money. So maybe they'll make a little bit less, but we'll have the interest of that couple hundred thousand still in the bank.
Mr. Lyons?
Yeah, I don't support this at all. First off, I've said this before, these are our students, all of them, and I believe we should fund them fully, as we would if they decided at, if they hear this message and they decide tomorrow to all show up on our door, we're funding them all anyway, so we might as well fund them this way. So that's my first thought. Number two, I don't understand at all the idea that us holding this money back to charter schools is somehow going to influence our state representatives, other than the lobbyists for the charter schools are going to be at them and say, get this done. I don't think that's going to work at all. As far as the statement is, you know, how flush they are with cash, I can tell you from working in the charter school office in Philadelphia, there's some charter schools that are run really well fiscally, and there's a lot of them that aren't. In fact, the number one reason that charter schools failed when I was in Philadelphia was because they couldn't balance their books, had nothing to do with their ability to educate children. That's the parts that I see. Quite honestly, I'd rather see us pass resolutions telling our representatives and senators to go do their jobs, and anytime we're out in public and we see them somewhere, we should be asking them, why aren't you talking to somebody about this impasse and stopping it now? Instead of coming to events at the public and walking around and shaking hands and acting like everything's wonderful, because it's not. And, you know, it's ridiculous that we're, how many months now past this budget and going into 30-plus days in the federal budget. It's embarrassing as somebody who sits up here, and we're not allowed to do that. We're not allowed to say we're withholding, and we're not withholding any money anywhere else. We're paying money to have our kids go in other places that we're spending money to, and we're not talking about restricting any of that cash to save us money. So I don't agree with this at all, I will not be voting for it, and that's where I stand on it.
So Joe, those cyber charter lobbyists are pretty powerful, so.
I know them very well, and they are.
Yeah, getting them to help might be, might be helpful.
There's also a lot of brick-and-mortar charter schools that are watching every penny, because they don't have large lobbyists, and they don't have 30,000 students in their books. They have maybe a waitlist, but that's it. And, you know, they, that's, that's.
Thank you, Joe. That's the line that I was going down. I don't feel like using kids as a pawn, political pawn.
Yeah, I appreciate what Mr. Lyons just said about there are kids, okay? It's not untrue, okay, let's be honest. However, at the very end, he added a little caveat. He said, I'd like to see, you know, where there's other individuals we're paying still. To be quite honest, if we are, as a district, are facing a 25% reduction in money, then it'd be lovely if we could say to all of our vendors, write all of our bills for 25% less, say, blame the state government. I'd love that, too. I don't know if we have the ability, and I'm the IU representative, I don't know if we have the ability to begin paying the IU 25% of its bills. I don't know if we have the ability to pay all the other special education institutions that we pay money to 25% of their bills. I don't know that we have the ability or the authority to reduce everything else by 25%. If we did, I would do that, because if you want to be quote-unquote "fair" to all of our students, that's would be fair. But we have this ability to take that step. It may be limited, some might point fingers and wag and say that's, you know, you're picking on one. Well, no. I mean, our students right here in this district are living through that. So I appreciate Mr. Lyons' sentiments. To some degree, I share them, but I think this is a correct course of action. Anybody else? Okay, Terry, this is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
No.
Mr. Iusu?
No.
Mr. Hipob?
No.
Mr. Reimers?
Yes.
Mr. Spear?
Yes.
Mr. Shermer?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Passes five to four.
Okay, passes five to four. Thank you, everybody. Good discussion.
I'm glad that was a very tight vote.
Yep, I agree. Okay, moving on to number eight, fiscal consent agenda. Can I get a motion for 8A through 8D, please?
I'll make that motion for 8A through 8D.
Mr. Spear, can I get a second?
I will second.
Mr. Shermer, discussion. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Number nine, facilities consent agenda. Can I get a motion for 9A and B, please?
I'll make that motion as well.
Mr. Spear?
Second.
Mr. Kern seconds, discussion.
So for option B, this is just for us to, or for item B, this is just for us to reach out to CHA, to engage CHA, to conduct the site visits, and get us some more accurate pricing on different options for this. This isn't, by any means, us building a softball field at this point or anything, it's just getting more concrete pricing in.
That's correct.
Just a question for the facilities committee, since it is relevant to facilities, I know there was discussion about using our multi-purpose field, converting it from baseball mounds to a softball mound, that's still.
That will be one of the, that will be one of the options.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was going to be my question. Are we still reviewing all the different options, that, the Rossa fields, the potential of a new field, it's all still on the table?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, CHA will be visiting the Rossa fields and some other locations.
So there's a couple of things I can't tell from this recommended action. How much, like, what's the limit on how much we're going to authorize them to spend? And then, is this currently in the budget, and if not, how is this going to be funded?
So what I would recommend, since there may be some legal impacts with this, Mr. Garten, is that a conversation that we should have in executive?
Our legal ramifications, absolutely. But I don't know that the legal ramifications would extend to determining how much it's going to cost and how you're going to budget for.
Okay. Not, we don't have that information yet, and we, I don't even think the board has a feel.
I think Rob can probably give us a pretty good. Rob can probably give us a pretty good idea. So, so this isn't in our budget, or is it in your maintenance budget?
Can I finish what I was going to say?
Okay.
Once we have all three options quantified, then we can say, "Here's what the ball field's, uh, going to cost. Here's what modification, here's the Rossa field," and that'll all be presented at one time.
So, so maybe you're misunderstanding my question. How much is, how much are we going to approve for CHA to spend to get this information for us? That is my question.
Yeah, that's a fair question.
Or is it free?
That's a fair question.
Do not have a, a nail-down price for this, for this option at this time here. CHA historically has done all the designs for the baseball fields and softball fields, like that pumping station road at the high school and at sixth-grade center. But off the top of my head, I can't give you an accurate number. If I had to guess, you're going to meet a ten-thousand-dollar range, but I can confirm that.
That's about right.
My question was sort of along the same lines. Will CHA be also looking at the cost to up, or alter, upgrade, whatever you want to call it, the multipurpose field to remove the?
All three options are on the table.
But only one of them was mentioned here, so that's why I wasn't sure.
I'm not, I'm.
I actually had the price for the multipurpose field. We, that was one of the options when we were designing the field. I can have them.
Built consistent, it hasn't changed.
Update that number. I, I mean, don't hold me to it. I believe it was in a hundred-thousand-dollar range back a year ago. Because you're talking fencing, the, the portable mounds, uh, the base pegs, there's, there's some work that has to be.
And there was a third option, uh, updating the Rossa fields was one. The converting the, the multipurpose field was a second. I believe building our own facility, uh, was the third. Uh, will CHA be, as part of this, will they be, um, pricing out that as an option as well?
I already had that option on the agenda, and I could share it with the board again. That was down at, behind a high school at the end of Fifth Street. It's an old field hockey field that we're going to convert to a softball field.
Right, that's what I'm asking. Will they be pricing that out for us, or do you already have it?
I have that.
Okay.
We have that.
No, I did speak to a representative from Richland Township the other day. He, he reached out to me with concerns about, uh, reconstruction of fields five and six, which are the top fields in the back. Originally, now, we played down on, "Don't hold me to it." I don't know if it's three and four, two and four, down in the cloverleaf, because the upper fields won't have as much pressure if we're going to stick money into them. But now I was informed that we cannot do a permanent fence there and/or a warning trap because they use those for, like, movie nights in big event areas. So it's something that I'll incorporate into my allocate proposal for.
Isn't there a PIA double-A requirement for a warning track in outfield fencing?
That I don't know.
Yeah, I think this might.
I believe there is.
Yeah. I, I think, I think what you brought to our attention, David, is, is, is valid, right? If we approve this, we're approving a blank check.
I, I'd like to amend the motion to read, "Motion to approve the administration to engage CHA to conduct site visits and develop conceptual, conceptual drawings, which will include an a la carte list of potential improvements for both the two current fields at Veterans Park and the two additional fields, five and six, proposed by Richland Township, at a cost not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars."
Second.
Do we withdraw the motion originally?
I'll withdraw my motion.
We got, we, we had, we had a motion, we have a motion pa, we have a motion offered and seconded to amend. That's on the table before anybody withdraws anything.
First action to determine whether you're going to amend your original motion based on Mr. O'Donnell's recommendation for amendment.
Mr. O'Donnell, can we take out the conceptual drawings part?
Yeah.
Will you withdraw your second? I'll withdraw my motion.
Well, he was just reading what's there.
Yeah, it's on there.
It's the five, five, fields five and six, we can probably remove, but.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, so, uh, did I make the original motion? I'll withdraw my second.
Yeah, it was, it was you.
Okay, I'll withdraw my original motion. And do you want to withdraw the original second?
Once everything is withdrawn, right?
All right, so now we're back to square one?
Square one.
Okay.
So can we just, let me, one order, can we just pull A?
How about we do nine A?
Just pull A with not to exceed fifteen thousand.
A is not that one. A is the chiller. He's a chiller.
I'm sorry, it's O B, I'm sorry, B.
So, right now, I made a motion for A and B. So why don't we, let me, let me try this. I'm going to make a motion to pass nine A.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on the, the capital projects.
Any, any, any discussion on nine A?
Same question, it was applicable to both.
Oh, it was for both.
This is, this one is for soliciting bids, right? There's no cost for this one, right? Okay, then I have no problems supporting this one.
Okay, anybody else at discussion on nine A? Just let Terry catch up.
The only discussion I haven't have on.
B, Todd, I made the first, Todd's the second.
Is, uh, Mr. Garten, uh, is there a threshold or a, a cost where we require bonds? I just don't want to get into a situation where we don't have bonds on certain projects.
Not for consulting services, if you're talking about CHA.
No, this is relevant to the bid for the chiller.
Well, you'll re, you'll be a requirement when you actually get to the bid itself. It will be a bond requirement, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion on nine A?
I'm not sure I understand. Is that for the chiller as well?
It's just a chiller, yeah.
All right, all those in favor for nine A, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Now, can I make a motion for nine B? With the additional language in the motion to not exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Is that good enough, Mr. Garten?
That's exactly what you did.
You believe that's okay?
All right, any discussion on nine B?
Rob, is that, you think that's going to be okay? CHA will be able to work within those constraints?
I can confirm it. If, if the price comes in over that, I'll have a detailed proposal then for the next agenda meeting.
Before we discussed, did we get a second?
Oh, I think we did. Chuck Sherman.
I didn't hear it, sorry.
Yeah. So my discussion is why do we need conceptual drawings?
Eventually, we will, right?
Well, that's eventually. Are we looking at eventually right now?
They just need a sketch plan to see how we.
Yeah, conceptual drawings are pretty, pretty high-level. It's just a sketch.
So my, my other questions are still relevant. Is this fifteen thousand budgeted, and if not, where, how is it being funded?
That's administration.
It's out of the twenty-five percent we're withholding from the charter schools.
It, it, is it covered in your annual maintenance budget?
This will come out of a capital project, but I also have probably some additional money left over from the multipurpose field that we can pull from. That would be more of a dog question to me, but I.
Oh, bring her up.
I'm sorry, say that again? Say that again?
This could come out of our capital fund.
I heard that part.
And/or the baseball field, if there's my, like, for the heritage fence, like, for the additional work that we've done there.
We're over-budget on the baseball field.
For the offensive proj, the foul ball offensive project. When it's finalized, we came in under what it was originally was.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but you see my, my confusion there because overall, we're over-budget.
Uh, so, we did budget legal fees, so, um, hopefully, that maybe our legal fees are not going to exceed, so we could take the up to fifteen thousand dollars.
Not be using potential legal fees in connection with a title line matter.
Well, they're just budgeted.
As the solicitor.
We, we do have capital reserve funds that we can use, but we also have a budgetary reserve, and if we feel this is, uh, a need, then at, by the end of the year, we would know whether or not, um, Mr. Christine could come under budget. In total.
He's going to work hard to do that, and just a point of clarification, it's a multipurpose field. And, uh, another point.
Rob said it first.
Foul ball net.
It's also the javelin net. Actually, no, the javelin's somewhere else.
All right, any other discussion on nine B? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Eighth one. Moving on to ten, human resources consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve ten A through ten E, please?
So moved.
Second.
Reimers, Mr. Jackson, discussion? I don't hear any. Okay, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving on to eleven, Office of Teaching and Learning consent agenda. Can I get a motion for eleven A and B, please?
I'll make a motion for, um, eleven A, approval of new courses.
Motion for eleven A, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Reimers, discussion on eleven A?
I'm really looking forward to my son eventually being able to take the, um, LEAP, uh, gift seminar. So I think this is a great step. Also, the, uh, AP cybersecurity, both right up his alley, and looking forward to these, so, thank you.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. All right, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, can I get a motion for eleven B?
So moved.
Mr. O'Donnell, I will second.
Time, timeout, um, Terry's, Terry's text is incorrect.
Okay.
She did the whole agenda, rather than just A, which was the motion. We need to revise the text.
We will pause.
Well, bef, before we vote, can we have the discussion on?
Yeah, I think we can vote. I mean, then we can discuss, yes.
So, uh, similar questions? So the, um, total of fifty, five thousand two hundred dollars. Is it budgeted? If not, then how is it being funded?
So we have, uh, money budgeted for professional services. That's not tied to this specific person or this specific issue. It was, like, money that was budgeted, should we need to bring somebody in for support? So the money is there, and it's in this specific budget code for a purpose like this, but it wouldn't have said, like, this person's name if that's what you're looking for. Uh, but the dollar amount was there. We were, um, as many of you will remember, we were tasked with looking at some new scheduling options, um, at the high school and then eventually at the middle school. So in order to meet that need, that's why this is being recommended.
Thank you. That does answer my question.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
She didn't get the motion in second.
Finalized A.
I made the motion.
And I seconded it. Can I get a motion for twelve A, please?
So moved.
Mr. O'Donnell is on a roll. And Mr. Reimers. Any discussions on twelve A? These are the policy committee recommendations. All right, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Can I get a motion for thirteen A? Which is motion to approve the contract with Adam Finger for providing podcasting services.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Mr. Lyons, Mr. Spear, wasn't finished, but, uh, town hall meetings in the amount of two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. Discussion?
So, commute.
Is this budgeted?
No, no, this is, no, this is slightly different. Communications Committee discussed this, uh, and chose to move it forward during the September sixteenth committee meeting. This should have been on the September twenty-fourth board meeting for approval. We're once again approving a contract that has already had services rendered. We should not be doing that. If we have the ability to review a contract and approve it before the services are rendered, we should be doing that.
When were the services rendered?
Yeah, I got that same question.
Uh, September thirtieth was the first one, according to the contract.
The Coffee and Combo was, um, videoed. He was at Coffee and Q, but we have done nothing beyond that. But Board Member O'Donnell was correct.
Hi.
Hi. Come on up. Oh, hi.
Hi. We had approved it because it didn't go to the meeting, because I'm new, and I didn't know how to push it here. So that's why it's here now, so, human error.
Thank you, thank you for owning that. Um, it, it's not you specifically, but there's been a pattern of this, at this board, approving contracts. There are situations that warrant it when something is needed in an emergency situation, but this I do not think is one of them.
Yeah, well, what I will say is, the administration, and prior administration, has, has gotten, since I've been on the board, has gotten much better because I've been a real, and they'll tell you, a thorn in their butt about, about contracts like this that have wrong dates on them or approving them after the start dates, and, and especially a service that has already been rendered is, like, that's a big no-no to me.
This has only been partially rendered. Fair, fair point.
Correct.
Now, well, yeah, my question is about the need for this to be a thing at all.
I mean, granted, it's not a lot of money, um, but we have the ability in-house to do this. Why are we, uh, contracting this out to somebody? And is it something that we desperately need to be spending money on? I don't know the answer to that.
So this was discussed in communications, and while we have the ability to do some of this stuff, we don't have necessarily the, um, equipment and some of the requisite skill set for the editing and post that needed to facilitate some of this stuff. So that was the, the impetus for the Communications Committee recommending that we bring it to the board for approval.
So then, the continuation of my, um, question then would be, is podcasting or, or whatever service Mr. Finger is providing, is it necessary?
Uh, in the spirit of, um, specifically Superintendent Cole, where we focused on increased communication, i- if we brought it forward, we felt it was necessary to expand the types of communication we have in this district. So tied into Coffee and Q, which is public-facing get-togethers, uh, podcasts, uh, which will be video and audio, it's, it's another medium for, to us to spread the word of things that we're doing in the district. So, uh, we brought it forward. Missy is a team of one, and, um, as Board Member O'Donnell stated.
One and a half, she's got an injury.
She does, she does, she does. Maggie is awesome. And watching them together is even more awesome. But yes, I mean, we, we brought it forward because we felt it necessary. Missy and I talked about this to give her, and that was always the vision, if, if you remember, when we brought this back in-house, the Director of Communications to.
Can I ask clarification from Mr. O'Donnell? You're stating that the Communications Committee discussed this at some time in the past. Can you recall when that discussion occurred?
Yes, uh, I believe I put it in my notes here. It was September sixteenth.
Okay, so you're, you're discussed in committee on September the sixteenth?
And our next board meeting was September the twenty-fourth.
That's, that's fine and dandy. The invoice in front of you is dated August twenty-sixth. So the administration completed a, an agreement on August the twenty-sixth with this individual. The invoice is on your agenda.
Just because you got an invoice doesn't mean you completed an agreement.
So service, first service is rendered, we're on September thirtieth.
Fair point. I appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
And Mr. Garten, if, if, um, the Public Relations Department, I'm not actually sure if it's its own department or if it just falls under Dr. Friedman's budget, if they have money in their budget for this, based on the amount of this contract, do they even need board approval for this?
Taking over a hundred dollars requires board approval on a contract.
Okay, but.
But not individually, technically, right?
Be not individually.
Does everyone, don't we often get things in?
Okay, now, the o, the other thing was, um, if this was rendered before there was a, a contract signed or anything like that, could Mr. Finger just do this work for our Public Relations Department without a contract? Even if it's above a hundred dollars, just as a service?
Be a, he would be providing it pursuant to what he felt was a contract, and you wouldn't, you wouldn't pay him because you don't have authority to pay him.
Okay, no, I, I just, I, I always knew that there was an amount, and, and that I know some departments can get things done, you know, some services. Okay, no, I just, I always knew that there was an amount and, and that I know some departments can get things done, you know, some services provided. Like you can have a meeting catered by Dave's Hot Chicken without paying Dave's Hot, without having a contract with Dave's Hot Chicken.
Your contract be obligated to pay something. The chicken place is just part of your ordinary expenses for on everyday operations.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other?
Also, yeah, sorry, I just want to add, Missy correct me if I'm wrong here, the funds that you're allocating to this, you're basically moving from another area that you found ineffective. And, yeah, so instead of paying for postage, which is really expensive, we're moving it here where we hope it'll be more, more cost effective.
And a fraction of what was budgeted. Thank you for pointing that out, and that's why I didn't ask it. It was part of the discussion. I should have brought it up for the good of the board.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Down to fourteen informational items. We have the senior high school suspension report, the SRO report, enrollment updates. Let's see, transportation, bus patrol, guest speakers for elementary, middle school, and high school.
President Hipoff, just relevant to the enrollments, I see it under executive content. Is there a reason why we can't have it in the public domain, enrollment? Usually we discuss that, right, in the public forum?
I am not sure.
It's under public content here. Oh, no.
Underneath.
I know historically we've done it in the public. I didn't know if there's a reason for executive.
I'm not sure either, to be honest with you.
Sure, I just didn't want to interrupt. We had made a decision of maybe a year and a half ago to change the way that we did enrollment reports. So the board was still asking for regular enrollment reports, which are what these are, but then the public-facing ones are on a list, which I can bring back up, that I shared with the Ed Committee. I think they're quarterly, and those are slightly different in terms of the information that is presented so that we aren't able to identify certain things. So that's why some of them are in the public, according to that chart that we came up with, and then the rest would be in executive content.
So in your opinion, there's some data in this chart, it's an executive summary, that was, is not applicable for public viewing, in your opinion?
There are some privacy issues.
Yes, and, yes, and based on the schedule that we came up with in the Education Committee, as I said, about a year and a half ago or so, this is not one of the months where we were sharing data, that it was asked of us to have regular reports. So we're trying to balance both of those things by making the publicly available reports on that chart and then not, not redacting information for these.
As long as it's available, as long as it's, it sounds like you were making it regularly available quarterly to the public in some fashion, then that's fine.
Correct.
And I think maybe that would be the helpful thing in the public content, say the next, the next report will be for the public, at least.
Sure, perhaps it would be helpful to reshare the document of when we plan to put out information as a whole, so people can see which months they can expect to see which enrollment reports. Would that be helpful?
That would be.
Thank you.
Anything else on informational items? We've got a new business for the board. Anybody have new business?
Mr. Hipoff did finally commission the Sports and Activities Committee. If you want to.
Yeah, yeah, sure. So, Mr. Spear, since it was his, his idea to do this, and I agree with where he's going with this, he just has to put it all together now. It's going to be Mr. Spear, Mr. Lyons, and myself on the committee. And I'm sure you will schedule some meetings and.
Make a vision and a charter and a mission and values.
We can bury him in red tape, can't we?
You can try, but my first.
He'll just AI it, don't worry.
My first task is to talk to Brian to see when he's, the best time to do these meetings is going to be, and then.
Which is difficult with an athletic director's schedule.
Yeah, oh, I know. It may end up being during the day. I know Mr. Lyons had mentioned maybe after the Ed Committee meetings. So we'll see. We have to figure that all out. And then, at least for me, my next goal is I would like to visit, you know, all, if not most, of the sports and activities at least once, just to see. I don't know if there's things that are going on here that I'm not even aware of, so if I'm going to be reporting on these things, I'd like to know how, you know, what exists and how.
Here you're off to buy tickets to those events.
I'm hoping I get a pass for some of them, but you're right. I may have to.
We even can get you a pass for events at other schools for free.
You know what?
I believe you already got that.
We have that.
I think Terry.
We all have that.
I believe, now, I think it was Brian, our athletic director, that he was the one that got them for us? And I believe I'm the only school board member that has used theirs, because I've been to most of the away football games too, and that.
I actually went to a southerd.
Okay, good, good. All right, well, thank you, President Hipoff, for that.
Thank you, Mr. Spear, Mr. O'Donnell.
Mr. Hipoff, yes, while we're talking about committees, a little while back, we walked through QE with community stakeholders, and there was discussion of an ad hoc community committee to start to talk about how and what we could potentially, you know, provide to the community as mementos and memories of, of the QE building. So I would ask that we formally form a community ad hoc committee and charter them to look at what is able to be reasonably salvaged from the building and what methodologies we can use to either enable folks to get mementos from QE or potentially salvage some of the things that are in there and maybe recoup some money, put some money out, put some bids out there, let people put bids in to do some salvage work and try and reduce some of our spend and kind of explore those options.
Sure.
One, one more thing, and this is for Dr. Friedman, the Richland Historical Society has reached out to me because they caught wind of the building tour, and they have some interest in participating in such a committee and potentially taking a look at the building.
That's awesome. Sounds good.
Who else on the board, maybe I'll take it quick, or you can, you guys can email me, who's interested in being on the ad hoc?
I would do it since I brought it up.
Yeah, I would definitely. You're on.
It's our, it's our region. Which one, do you want to be on it?
I would, I would be interested in it. I wasn't sure who you were talking to.
No, you're.
Dave.
Please add my name as well.
Dave, Joe.
You want to do it too, Ron?
Mr. Jackson.
I have some thoughts as to some of the things Mr. O'Donnell touched on, but I had to have some thoughts about the manner in which this should be done, so I just want to share them with the committee.
Thank you.
I think there's a letter from me somewhere in the administration talking about the parameters of what you do with respect to items from QE as far as disposition of it. So I think I've already weighed in on the economics and the legal aspects of it.
So I don't drag this out, or so we don't drag this out. Can I just say who the ad hoc committee is now?
Sure.
Great. Mr. O'Donnell, you're headed for the ad hoc committee. Mr. Reimers, Mr. Lyons, Mr. Jackson, you're on the committee as well. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if it's comment, question.
Please, go ahead.
Since bus report, bus patrol is in our information session, do we have an update from, I want to say it was Richland?
Richland Township.
Yeah, what's, what's going on there? Are they, what do we know?
They, myself, Dr. Friedman, Mr. O'Donnell, Mr. Spear, and some other community members were at, was at the Richland Township meeting. They have, they saw us there and they preempted us by saying that they are back on board. They did not, they were not very specific about whether or not they were doing three or nine. I think Dr. Friedman can maybe speak to a little bit to that, but they said, and they were back on board with looking at the violations and issuing citations.
Chief Fico's biggest concern was that he didn't know if all licensed drivers exactly knew the rules of the road. Meaning that he's pretty confident that if a bus stops and there's traffic behind the bus, the large majority know to stop. They don't know to stop on the other side of the road. If there is a Jersey barrier, they don't have to stop, but if there's not a barrier, they do have to stop. And what he's afraid of, he told me, was that cars going at a high rate of speed and then jamming on their brakes, and he's envisioning like a multi-car pileup on the other side of the road. So they were looking into, and I don't know, I haven't gotten an update from our Transportation Director, but they were looking at geo-fencing part of three oh nine, so.
Mr. O'Donnell's face is frowning. Just to clarify what was said there, just you understand?
I believe I understood. They're looking into the capability of segregating out tickets that occur on the three oh nine corridor because our police chief thinks that if people know the law, it's going to cause accidents.
No, you're misunderstanding. Again, the issue is if, if, let's assume for a moment a bus stops southbound on three oh nine.
Yes.
Everybody else traveling southbound on three oh nine will stop.
Yes.
Those individuals traveling northbound on three oh nine, if there is no barrier, if there is no barrier, are required to stop.
Correct.
So an individual traveling on three oh nine going northbound, who chooses to stop, it's a high probability, we can all envision it, another car behind them, traveling north on three oh nine, won't know, won't be paying attention, won't see that car stopped and run into the rear of them. That is the concern.
But does not giving tickets stop?
I think your concern then needs to be, needs to be addressed where it's appropriate, and that would be with our lawmakers, right? Because that is the current law that is in place today. You are required, you are legally required, and everybody takes a driver's test and gets a driver's manual, and it is in that driver's manual. Whether you know that or not, you are legally required to stop for that bus. We have children that are being picked up on three oh nine. You should be stopping.
But no children are crossing three oh nine.
How can you guarantee that?
The point is, well, we better guarantee it.
We should be guaranteed.
God forbid we have a bus stop where kids are asked to cross six lanes. Are you kidding me? Like that would, that would be the egregious.
Yeah, I don't.
No way they would make a bus stop.
So I don't believe anyone is.
I would say that their bus stop is likely located on the same side of the highway that they dwell in.
They darn well better be.
That they dwell in, but you have no control over those individuals and what they're doing.
My point is, this is putting a camera on a bus, and it's almost entrapment of innocent public citizens doing no harm. So it is not for us to go to the legislature and change the law, it's for us to be worried about being the surveillance state and, and charging people that are not in any way harming or even beginning to risk harm. That's the problem here. Is it against the law for those people to go through, drive through the flashing red lights?
Technically, yes, yes.
So I'm not sure I'm following your logic where they're doing no harm. What logic do you think I was saying? You said the people going the other way are doing no harm. But what else did I say? Why do we even know this is happening?
Right, but Mr. Kern, you're.
Do we even know this is happening?
But everybody's forgetting.
Little spy cameras.
Everybody's forgetting a basic point here. Let's, let's, let's ignore bus patrol for a second. Let's just take bus patrol out of it. The law is what the law is. Even if bus patrol knowingly is no longer going to issue tickets for individuals who, or we're never going to send them there, there are still individuals who don't know anything about our district, who are not from Quakertown, don't know anything about bus patrol things, who are driving down that road, and assume they are law-abiding citizens. They will see that flashing yellow light and they will stop.
They might.
Again, but they, this is the whole supposition. The whole supposition is what happens if, and I'm saying that us changing the policy is not going to hap, is not going to change that possibility that somebody might stop. And it won't change that possibility that somebody else might not.
Yeah, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about ticketing people for.
So we're not ticketing them. I'm not even talking about tickets here. I'm saying.
I just want to reiterate something.
A law-abiding citizen will stop. Regardless of tickets, they'll stop, and the person behind them may not. That doesn't change if we issue tickets or not. It doesn't change.
I'm not arguing that, but I'm arguing the point of ticketing people.
So I just want to reiterate, I was passing on a message from Chief Fico, nor, I don't want to speak for him, I'm just kind of summarizing our conversation. It is not that Richland Township does not want to follow the law or turn the blind eye to the law. He was just merely stating in his opinion that he does not feel that a large majority of licensed drivers driving on that road would know the law to stop on the opposite side of the road. So that, that's what, that's what he feared. Like he doesn't have any hard and fast data of accidents that have occurred, but like that, that was his hang-up. And truthfully, like, I am not sitting here this evening at, at the board table to say that we should turn the blind eye to the law. I mean, that people should stop, but I can envision that there's a prob, you know, a decent probability of that potentially happening on the opposite side of the road, so.
So can I explain real quick what, I did have a discussion with Chief Fico after the meeting, and, you know, we both realized, as Mr. Jackson was saying, whether or not tickets are being issued, some people are going to stop on the opposite side and some people aren't, because the law is written that way. We really can't control that. So by not issuing tickets, it's not necessarily improving the safety of that road, which was Richland Township, you know, which was Richland Township Police's main concern. So what I, what I had suggested to him, and we spoke to Scott McElory in Quakertown, Chief McElory, to see if we can still get that billboard, that big circular billboard for free community use. So maybe we have a public marketing thing where we tell people, the law is still to stop on reds. Whether tickets are being issued or not, that's not my concern. My concern is the safety. I don't want to be causing accidents. And step one is an advertising campaign. If we can still get that billboard for, for community use, I think that would be, go a long way. And on the north end, maybe we can use those construction signs where they display text, you know, to stop on red. And part number two, which I had asked Dr. Friedman to, Ms. Safari isn't here tonight, but to look into how many stops we have along there and maybe see if we can't move some to vans that can actually pull in people's driveways so that it doesn't have to stop on three oh nine and cause these safety issues, or even possibly move on to a side street if, if it's possible. But let's try and reduce the amount of stops we have on three oh nine, put out a, I don't think we'll be able to get rid of them all, but also try and educate the public. You know, we didn't get bus patrol to make money. You know, it's not about issuing tickets to do that. Maybe if we issue enough tickets over the years, that's the, the marketing campaign we need to do to get people to know the law. But I don't necessarily want to go down that road either, so.
I could get behind your move to avoid the problem in the first place by moving, like even into a parking lot or something, I don't know. But yeah, I would get behind that.
Mr. O'Donnell, I'm sorry, go ahead. Mr. O'Donnell, the last comment on this.
So when bus patrol.
Last comment on this.
When, when bus patrol was being considered, right, that was part of, they were supposed to provide advertising to the public before, before, you know, and their advertising is a little sticker on the buses. But I, it was sold as a bigger advertising program than what it, what it was. To, to Mr. Spear's point, I think, you know, getting, using the resources we have to educate people is a good one. But the whole purpose for safety and the ticketing is to drive down the offenses. You get a ticket, you don't do it again. That's the, that's the intent behind it. So the whole reason we have the program in the first place is to increase safety.
If you, if you disagree with Chief, you know where he's at. Give, give it, no, I think we're done with this topic.
I just, quick add.
I think we're done with this topic.
It's not even about this topic. It's just that, what he's asking for, it exists on the PA Department of Transportation website. I'm watching the slideshow right now about the rules. Awesome. We can grab it, we can put it on our own.
It is school bus safety week, anyway.
Thank you.
I believe.
And any other?
It is.
President Hipoff, I was just looking at our calendar. We have less than four weeks away until our next board meeting, and I was hoping to see if we can have an executive session for the collective board, discuss a legal issue. If you can put that on a calendar somewhere or discuss it.
To discuss a legal issue?
Yeah, a contract that's under review.
Does it need to be in person or can we do it virtual?
I think it should be done in person.
We can discuss this. It's, we can discuss it in an executive session. I think we need to continue what we were talking about before the meeting.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other new business? I actually have something. So I'm a little, I was a little disappointed in, if you were watching me, at the last board meeting about iXL. So I, I'm a little, I was a little disappointed in, if you were watching me, at the last board meeting about IXL. And I, there was tons of questions up here, I believe. Myself and Mr. Reimers probably had the most questions going forward. I, I came very prepared and was, was ready to, you know, battle's a bad word, but really challenged the administration on what I was hearing, what I was seeing and who I was talking to in the district about IXL and the implementation of it and how it was working through the first five weeks of school when we had back to school night. I had asked at that time that the administration bring that back to the board meeting because we all had questions. Yes, myself, Mr. Reimers had the most, but we all had questions. More people watched the board meeting, while it's not a lot, but more people watched the board meeting than an education committee meeting. So I'm going to ask again, even though it was at the educational committee meeting, and I'm going to, Dr. Friedman, I want the presentation at the board meeting about IXL. I, it, it's, it's non-negotiable. I want the presentation. I don't care if it's the same one. I want it here. I want to be able to ask questions. I understand that's a, there's a professional development coming up to the teachers about IXL. I could be wrong about that, but that's what I've, that's what I understand. And we're 10-ish weeks into the school year and there are still staff that doesn't understand how to use this. And they are teaching my kids, kids of the board, and of this community. I'm very frustrated with this. So that, that's, that's my ask. That's my demand, actually. And that's all I got.
Okay, consider, consider it done. I'll work with OTL and we'll have that for you.
Thank you. Any other new business?
Do we have to announce if we're going back into executive session?
Yeah, I will right, right after general public comment.
I assume it's the same topic you're discussing before.
Yes, sir.
So there's no need for me to be present, I assume.
I don't.
When do you turn off, when do you turn off the meter?
Is that how we?
When you get home? When you walk out the door or get to hopping?
Is that how we save enough money for the other stuff?
Okay. Dates for board members' calendars on there. Any general public comment?
I, dates for calendars.
Yeah.
Please, everybody make a point to check it because if there are any changes to the calendar, it's going to be reflected there.
I think our next board meeting is on a Wednesday.
If there's changes to, to the calendar, do we have, Terry, do you update those and send out a, like a, a calendar invite?
I was going to say, how accurate is this? That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's just reference to the calendar. Currently our school website says the next board meeting is on November 13th and actually our board calendar says November 19th. So you just got to make sure the website's updated.
There's, there's a couple things I could, yep. All right, now general public comment. Ma'am, stick your name, municipality, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Sure. Roberta Rogers, Quakertown Borough. Since we've been told that the long-drawn-out saga of the multipurpose field has concluded, I would kindly request that the board publish the estimated versus actual costs, including the change amendments and any assorted items that were related to tangentially the ball field be posted for the public consumption. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Nope? Okay, we are going back into an executive session to discuss HR topics after the meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Kern, can I get a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.